But the comments that I've been getting about our meetings, they're happy with the meetings. But the sound and the video, the audio video is horrible. Anyway, I'd like to start off then with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the whole land of the many diverse First Nations and Maki people, whose ancestors have walked this land since time immemorial. We are grateful to work, live, and learn on the traditional territory of Treaty 8. Adoption of the agenda, the agenda was presented, distributed to everyone. Are there any additions or subtractions to the agenda? Hearing none, entertain a motion then to adopt the agenda. Councillor Temple. All those in favor, carry. Moving on then to 3.1, the capital budget. First off, I can tell you, I've looked at the capital budget and you're not getting everything. You can take that off the top without even consulting other councillors. Okay? I think we need to start with Mr. Joy with introductions and their titles from all the lady and the gentleman sitting behind you.
If they could just learn if you can find that.
Vern Walker, manager of utilities.
Mike Dandy, manager of public works.
You're 60 years of experience in those first two places.
Oh, not explaining it. Martinson, high representative chief.
The Anne Welling, manager of recreation.
Freeze, now senior community supervisor.
Where's your dog? Get somebody to take it. Be kind to it, I like that dog. Make sure it's nice and healthy when they steal it. Couple more weeks, she'll never catch up. Mr. CAO, we're totally in your hands to start off the capital budget.
Oh, very good. Thank you, your worship and councillors. Before I start, I do want to thank Shanda who worked with Anadolu, my managers, who worked together to put together, to make it easy for not only the council, but for the general public to understand why we're asking for these projects. I know that the mayor said we aren't getting everything on our wish list, but I'll give you a big picture here before I start. Everything that's listed here, all these projects, we are able to finance them through the grants that we've received or will receive and the reserves. The only problem with that is, if it is a problem, is the reserves will decrease by 6 million from our current balance of 13.3 million to down to 7.3 million. So starting with 2026, and you'll see in blue at the bottom of the Excel spreadsheet, the contributions to the reserves that we anticipate we'll be able to make in 2026, which will bring that balance of reserves just under 7.3 million. We've got one road project and of course the water projects that are up top, carried forward from last year. But any additional, if we wanted to really do another road area, we would definitely have to issue debt. We have lots of capacity for debt servicing. We have lots of available, without it being too onerous on the general public, if it came to that. Shanda has worked diligently in sharpening up the operational budget. You know, in past years, we've had, in 2023, we had a surplus of 1.9 million. In 2024, 900,000. And we're anticipating 2025 somewhere in the area of a 300,000 surplus. Both Shanda and I have gone through the budget with a fine toothed comb. And we have found areas that are based on the trends that we've seen over the past three to four years. And as of 4:00 PM today, we're sitting on a budget surplus of, what have I got here? 127,000. And so that gives us some leverage, whether council wants to issue debt or it allows us to increase the transfer to reserves. And if we keep with a moderate tax revenue.
Excuse me, I'm sorry for the interruption. 162,000 dollar surplus?
127,000.
Okay, 120,000. Are you talking about the current 25 budget or the future 26 budget?
26 budget.
Okay.
That's what we're working on, based off, you know, 2023, 24, 25, year-to-date, what we're seeing in 2025. And, you know, it didn't make sense on the number of our budget line items to keep that budget at that high. When in past experiences going, we either need to increase our revenues or decrease our expenses. So this has a, you know, this is the tentative, this is just what our first draft that we'll present to you on next Tuesday. But where am I here? The, yeah, so, you know, I was, as the CAO, I do believe in moderate tax rate increases, tax revenue increases, so that we don't have a big spike in three or four years. Nonetheless, we can start with the projects. We'll start with the.
Before we go on, you mentioned the space we have in debt. And we filled, we took on that debt through Deventre, right?
Right.
I think you need to explain that process to everybody around the table so we know exactly how that debt is controlled. I know it's in the MGA, how it's taken up, where it's coming, who's financing it, etc.
Well, the who's financing it is the NVC, what it is, I, MFA?
No, we're not financed.
Corporation here, so it's not. But, you know, we have, when I mentioned 127,000 surplus and if we had a moderate 2% increase in tax revenue, that would allow us to have 207,000 available for debt servicing. If we have another $3 or $4 million project, the debt servicing would be somewhere in the 100,000 area, 150,000 maybe paying down principal and interest. But I just wanted to give you that big picture in case council does want to do an extra road project. Anything here, of course, it's council's decision.
So what is the percentage that's being, what's the interest rate on Deventre's?
I'll have Shanda answer that one. I think it's 4% or 5%, I think. Might be lower than that. We'll get that answered.
Yeah, the Alberta Finance Corporations, call it that, I think it's got a slightly longer name, basically buffers us from market interest rates, right?
Right.
And it's called the Alberta Capital Finance Authority.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So I'm saying we've got the options available, whichever way council wants to go. And if you don't want to approve one or two or three of these projects that are on the list, then that allows us to, well, that means we don't have to cut into our reserves quite as much. So let's start with the carried forward projects from 2025, which has been approved by not only.
Yeah, there's, I find these on the table.
Yep, just so you can write notes on them if you want. And I have them black and white, but of course the PowerPoint's in color. The carried forward projects were approved not only by the town, but also by the county because they contribute to our rather, some of our water projects. The first one being the water treatment plant upgrade. And it's aging and outdated and it just needs to be upgraded. We have to keep our standards to provincial standards. And as you can see, we'll receive an Alberta wastewater partnership grant of 1.9 million. Big Lakes County will contribute, and they've already approved the 625,000. And from our reserves, 598,000. The raw water power backup, again, that was approved in the previous year. And during, are the experience during the wildfires of 2023, there were power outages that were experienced, and so we want to avoid that in the future. With the more frequency of wildfires we have and the probability that we'll be affected again. The raw water bank stabilization. There were some failures and unexpected repairs to the water reservoirs, so we don't want to defer this any longer. Again, this will be completed in 2026. The council chamber audiovisual upgrades were approved in 2025. And as you can experience when you look on YouTube, how the audio is very spotty and hard to, sometimes garbled and sometimes non-existent when some of the councillors or myself are speaking. So this definitely needs to be fixed. The, and we've got an incorrect amount on the budget, there's 70,000, but it's 125,000. That will be financed through unrestricted reserves.
David, that's only the amount being carried forward because we've paid so much already.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
That's only the amount being carried forward because we've already paid, we had to pay a deposit to get the stuff ordered and whatnot. So we've paid some of it already in this year's capital budget. We just got to carry forward the remaining amount.
So these are the only four pro years that are on the carry forward, right?
That's correct.
Now, let's find out if councillors have any questions or comments. Remember, we, our senior managing team is here, so feel free to take the deep dive into these numbers. Are there any questions or comments? Councillor Rinderland?
Just one quick, underwater bank stabilization, 200,000, that's just a study right now. That's not doing the work, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, smart turn, okay. Actually, that is doing some of the work. The engineering portions have been completed and we will be doing some of the work. The problem with the bank stabilization, this last few years, we've had no runoff. It can only be done when the bank or the water level is down in the spring of the year. In the last couple of years, we haven't been able to get it completed just simply because we got to start pumping as soon as we start to get runoff in order to refill. We're hoping for a better outcome this coming year. So it's, we're going to catch 22 that if it's down, we need to start pumping as soon as we can. And that's when the work needs to be done, is when it's down. So we're hoping, well, you've all seen during the tour, we're right full right now. So we're not going to be down a terrible amount. And hopefully we can get something done in early March and April.
It's a real squeaky wheel, isn't it?
Yeah. We don't want to take no chances, right?
Any other questions? Tom Sopurski, any questions?
Yes, on the water, the raw water power backup?
Yeah.
Is that a building, power plant and electrical?
It's electrical, a genset, and some modifications to the pumping that's actually there now. It's all contained within the actual water treatment plant contract that's closing next Monday. But we'll have firm numbers going forward for that.
Where's the generator that was at the old water plant? Is it any good?
No. We raided parts off of that one to keep the one at the tennis courts. They were identical, can't get parts for the one at the reservoir anymore. Because that's, they were both built in 1980 and we've been utilizing that one for parts.
I keep hearing that phrase and it bothers me. We can't get any more parts. That's sad. Anyway, councillor Hamlin, any part of your climate now? Councillor Temple?
Just one from Vernon. This on the raw water bank stabilization, you said the study and some work. Will that be all the work we need to do or will it need more?
Some of the proposed work was a little more elaborate than what we needed. Of course, engineers, they want to propose elaborate work. It's not exactly what we needed to have completed. So we've taken it back to them, I've taken it back to them and said, this is what we want. This is what we need. And so they're revisiting that stuff and they're designing it right now. And that's what's being done as we speak. Thank you.
Councillor Rinderland?
Councillor?
Deputy Mayor?
Sit here.
Yeah, I'm.
You've gone mountainous so far, Mr. Walker.
Not so, I used to have square shoulders, there's some now.
I know the feeling. Go ahead, CAO.
Okay, so those are the carried forward projects. Since Vern's right here right now and this is the top of the list for 2026, the new gas line supply. And perhaps speak to the urgency of this because of Prairie River gas.
Again, in the, your worship, in the tour that we went on on the bus, councillor Martinson wasn't there, but I think he's fully aware of how much 1960s high-pressure force means in the ground. Right now, Prairie River has expanded their system to the east. And you know the soccer creek, Big Meadow, all the way on down Foss. They cannot supply us the gas they used to afford the P line and the hospice off of that line. So what we're proposing to upgrade secondary supply and eventually it would abandon the 26 miles or 26 kilometers of pipe in the future is to make this line go six, about six miles to the northeast. We didn't have time to go to that site, but it is, I'm not sure if people know where Cowell's farms are at, but it's out in that area. And this would give us a 6-inch line coming in from sales top there. And it would give us plenty of gas, update our transmission capabilities, and supply P line estates with sufficient gas.
Okay, I'm not going to do the usual round table asking everybody if they have questions. We've got a full evening and we've got a lot of projects. So after every project, I say, you're going to look around. If you want to say something, just raise your hand. I'll put you on the speakers list. But if there's no hands raised, then we move to the next project, okay? Is that fine? No more round table, otherwise we're going to be here too long. But are there any questions or comments on the new gas supply line? Deputy Mayor?
Working with Prairie River gas, are they going to utilize the line if we do put it in there?
In discussions with them, they're saying, no, that's not going to benefit them in any way. It's going to supply our line, we're going to basically take over their, the exchange line. And that would be connecting to both the South Peter and the existing exchange.
At the time I was leaving, they were bringing another line in from the south or something. Did they ever do that?
They ended up shutting down that compressor station to the south. And that's why the issue of gas or supply.
Any other questions, councillors? Next project.
Okay, the water wear and reservoir expansion, the engineering. So this is a budget that was proposed by NPE to start this project. Again, there is, due to weather changing, climate changing, we don't want to delay it any further and we'd like to get the project going as soon as we can.
Okay, basically this project is what was discussed at council last week. The grant did go out on time, it's been applied for. So right now, it's going to be kind of a wait and see before we proceed too much forward with this because we're just wanting to clarify whether the engineering upfront is going to be covered under the grant. If we spend money before the grant is approved, sometimes it's on our dot. It's not covered. So this, this will be kind of a wait and see project until we hear back from the grant.
Question from council, councillor Horuski.
Has it been approved by Environment?
None of this has been approved by Environment. We've had discussions with Environment, but we need that process. Once we hear back on the grant, we can start that process. And there's going to be consultations with users, all the way down to Slave Lake consultation process. There'll be consultation with people upstream of the weir. It's going to be a two-year thing before this can even be started to construct.
Further questions from council?
I have a, go ahead.
If you have the weir built though, do you need the expansion anyway?
That is what the big question is. Maybe with the weir, if it works the way I anticipated it to work, we may not need to do the construction of the second reservoir. That's why we're doing it a two-phase project. We're going to get the weir in place, see if we can back up enough water, use the river as a secondary reservoir rather than having to construct it.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple, I happen to think that water politics is going to become more and more contentious. In fact, it is in Southern Alberta, it's becoming quite heated. If we do not get 30% funding grant, what happens to this project? Are you suggesting we freeze it for a year or that we go ahead and fund it by ourselves or?
Well, that's another thing to discuss is we'll wait back to hear from the grant, see what they say about the principle of the project. I know we've, I've talked to some of the people in Environment and they are supportive of it, but not officially. Because they realize that this river, because we've brought it to their attention in the past. And they realize that this river is not flowing the way it used to. And they are unofficially supportive of the project in the drinking water side of AEP.
It's hard to believe that some 65 years ago, right on the river by the Tong yard there, there was at least eight feet of water and often ten feet.
Yeah, I remember hearing people were diving off the bank and into a pool rather than just waiting across it.
Yeah, we had a diving port there, you know, a big heavy 2x16 plant. And there was, there's all kinds of water, you could dive off that and not hit the bottom. Okay, any other questions on the weir? What, do you have more questions? No, I don't. Do you have any? Yeah. Okay.
Will Alkali help fund this project easily?
Yes, they have been very forthcoming with any funding that is to do with water. I would anticipate, I would anticipate that they will participate. I can't speak for them, but history has led us to believe that.
Any further questions? Anything, okay, moving on.
And we have the water meter upgrade program. Our water meters are very old. We need to put in smart meters to make things more efficient and for more accurate billing and to avoid failures. So this is, this will be done over two years. And anyway, for your consideration.
In regards to the water meters, your worship, that is one of the first projects I did when I started with the town. I worked with Stanro and we installed these meters. We have upgraded meters as they have failed or quit working, but there's a good percentage room out there. There's a good possibility we're losing revenue because of the meter wear. So it's, and some of the software that is utilized to read these meters is no longer supported. We would like to switch to a smart meter that can send signals to a truck that when you drive by it, reduce the time in reading these meters by, from 10 days to one day. And that's just becoming more efficient with this. Some of the smart meters do have an automatic, well, you can go up and rather than shutting the curb stop off, you can go up, press a button, and there's a valve inside that'll shut that meter off. So this is the reasoning behind it is modernizing so that the software can be utilized for billing purposes and just more accurate readings and probably create some more revenue due to the meters being old and worn.
Questions? Any questions? Okay, this 350,000, and you said this is a two-year project. Is this 350,000 for both years or just the first year?
Just the first year, second year will be 300,000. We spread it out so it wouldn't be so impactful on the capital budget and time-consuming for us to get them installed. One meter company has, actually both of the, two meters companies out of the three we've consulted with have said that they would purchase the meters, lock us into a two-year contract if we go ahead with this so that we're paying the same price for the meters this year. We pay the same price for them in the second year.
So could we soften the pressure on our capital budget by doing this over three years?
They didn't indicate that they would go three years with that pricing. Three years could be manageable. It's all in council discretion on how quickly they want to move on this. I know this watch.
To confirm, it's 350,000 for the entire project, whether it's two years to three years?
No, 700,000.
Okay.
It's 350,000 for this coming year and it'd be 350,000 for 2027.
So we could soften the pressure on the current budget and next year's budget by staging it over three years instead of two?
Yes. And that's the council's discretion.
Any questions or comments, councillor Rinderland?
That's a very quick question. We're talking about water meters here, what about the gas meters?
The gas meters, we have been switching through the gas meter change program because Measurement Canada requires us to change them out. If you buy new meters, they're good for 10 years. If you recertify a meter, it's only good for five years. So we have been purchasing brand-new meters with the remote. These companies are capable of reading the gas meters as well. So it would all be contained in the same filling software that is there.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Councillor Trump?
Can you throw a ballpark number out there? What's the payback period? He said you did, we're going from 10 days spent every month reading water meters to one day spent every month. There's obviously a return on investment here, is that five years or 10 years?
I'm thinking that we could recover, probably about 12 years, everything would be. And we wouldn't get ourselves into this position again because we'd probably, after 10 years, we would start to upgrade a certain amount of meters per year. So similar to the gas, the way the gas system works. So we don't get into this position. So we don't get into this position again.
Any further questions? Thank you. Anyone else on this one? Okay, moving forward then.
If you want to speak to the other, somebody has more questions. Just one more for council stakeholders. And that's not including the revenue we may realize due to fall of the year. So it could be quicker than that.
I'm assuming that if that assumption is based on the fact that the older the meter, the less accurate it comes the water flowing through. It doesn't start counting too much, it just becomes less and less.
Yes, yeah, it's usually in the customer's favor.
Seven hundred thousand cover everybody's all the water meters?
Yes. At this time.
At this time.
And at this point, if that handheld dies, so the picture you've seen on that, then we are going back to paper to read because they're obsolete.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead. So next project is office flooring replacement. The flooring that we have in the building here is getting warranty and all the reasons are given here as far as the dust and allergens and bacteria. And it hasn't been maintained as well as it should have been over the years. So administration is looking to council to approve additional carpeting.
Questions? Any questions? Councilor Hahn.
You just mentioned that you want to, are you putting in carpeting or flooring? Because you said carpeting. So would that create the same problem?
I've talked to a couple flooring specialists and I've asked them what they recommend and they recommended the carpet tile. The only thing is if you're going back to carpeting, we're going to have to really make sure people aren't wearing their outdoor shoes into the office anymore.
Questions or comments, Councilor Thunder?
Is it actually a hundred thousand square feet? Have we got any quotes or a hundred thousand dollars? Have we got any quotes?
We haven't, they haven't made here before. We had to have this already to give us an estimate, so I don't remember.
Do we know how many square feet we're replacing? Do we know?
No.
Okay.
Something happened, I can figure it out.
No, that's fair. No, you're getting.
But it's useful to have that before we sit down a week from today.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Carpet tile would be the best. The new carpet tile out there, you can steam clean and everything, it doesn't wear it out. Plus with this carpet tile, is that where you get a lot of wear where people are walking? You could just pull up that one tile and replace it instead of replacing the whole carpet down the hallway. So I think carpet tile would be the way to go.
Yeah.
Other further questions or comments? Councilor Minderline?
So with the carpeting, we are then talking about regularly scheduled cleaning of carpet? Because I know even back to two thousand and eight when I first came here and we got the carpet cleaner committee here and just literally pulled butter on the carpet back then. And I don't think it's been done on a regular basis. But I think that's one of the reasons it's probably running into problems. So we're going to then put it on schedule for at least every two years so to have the carpets cleaned.
So as part of our janitorial contract, they're supposed to shampoo the carpets twice a year? Yeah.
Yeah, janitorial contracts, unless they have the proper machinery in that, this little rug doctor doesn't do it. They need something larger that comes in with these. It's powered from outside the unit, not from the van. That's, I think that was what the problem for, just using rug doctors. I say it all the time, it's from time to time.
Deputy Mayor is calling.
I believe this stuff was installed when Kevin Gray was here as the C E O in nineteen ninety-three or ninety-four. So he's thirty-two, thirty-one, thirty-two years old.
And there's no more parts available.
The sound system didn't catch that. I am getting so sick and tired of that. You know, we're either hearing it's out of date, software's out of date, or some pump hasn't got parts. That means we, you know, the neglect has been long-term. And I have to tell you, the neglect isn't sitting over there. The neglect is sitting around here. Okay? Do you have any other comments to depress me?
Go ahead.
I know the new council will fix everything so we have a regular program.
Remember what I said, you're not getting everything.
The next one is the roads overlay program. I always looked at here in the Excel, she's an asphalt resurfacing program. Again, they use a hundred thousand a year. They had trouble, sorry, using a hundred thousand a year. But regular shifting from road to road, whatever needs the most. So the manager of roads just asked for sixty thousand this year. So it'll be a year, every year we'll put in for sixty thousand.
Questions or comments? Anyone? Councilor Minderline, any comments?
No.
I'm told pictures of your street. I don't see the Santa Claus. I think that is your house. I don't think they did any paving. What's, it's a little hard to do that.
So this is normal block hole fixing?
No, this is an overlay, total overlay on certain streets, wherever we can do it. So block holes are something we do every day. You know, if there's a block, we fix it. We don't get to them always, you can tell around town. But no, this is a total overlay. It's like Hermes' street over there, we did an overlay on his street this year. So.
Okay, now I need you to help me understand something. When you gave us the tour, you showed us three streets.
Yep.
Is this one of them?
No. This is something we do ourselves. This is something we do ourselves. The stuff I showed you guys was contractors would have to do it.
Right, it would, and in fact, it'd be a total rebuild.
Total rehab, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's clear then to council, went on the tour. This isn't one of the three that we saw. This is just normal neighborhood renewal kind of stuff.
And there's only certain places that we can do it. The curbs have to be in good shape in order to carry out these projects because if the curbs are not there, you do, all you're doing is just moving water from one place to the other and then it ponds in some of these areas. So it's, it has to be an area where there's good curves.
So this is what you use a little paper for?
That's right.
Okay. Would you also imagine?
I'm not going to say too much because you're not going to like it.
No? I'm glad you're picking that segment up. Saves my ulcer coming back.
Go ahead, next one is.
The walking trail. Walking trail handsome. Again, every year we spend some money on the trails. I know having walked J C Park, looks like that's the J C Park Trail close to the rodeo grounds. It's a lot of upheaval and damage. So I think this is an easy ask. Again, it's a maintenance program.
Yeah, in the past four years, we have replaced two very large sections. One section went from the start of the new part of the walking trail, the newer part, which was twenty years ago, but it is the newer part of the walking trail. And we did a stretch there of seven hundred meters. And then last year, we did another stretch of seven hundred meters, but that was, that was two big areas. This time, we're looking for just some spot fixes. We have the pictures you see in the, on the paper here. That area is probably a hundred feet long. So it's just some spot area along the way, you know, where we got to try to. And I was, you know, what you see right there? When we do this, that will be the fourth time since that walking path has been built that we will replace that section. It's because of the type of vegetation around there that grows up through. So.
And trees have roots.
Yeah.
Questions from council? Are all of our walking trails accessible to wheelchairs?
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Moving ahead then.
The sidewalk replacement program, normally it's a hundred thousand a year. I did ask Mike to double it. I know from my having walked through the town and a lot of the general public complaining about the beautification of the town. Sidewalks is one area, so Fifty-Fifth Avenue is terrible. But other streets are too and are hard to walk for us older folk. So it's, again, it's something that's on my own request that I thought it might be advisable to double this budget this coming year.
I have to check with the deputy mayor to find out if that comment, that older folk was a thought of me, but he excuse me.
I'm the one walking these cities.
I just have a question that goes back to the previous one. And forward, local government fiscal framework grant. Somebody please tell me about what that is and how do we get it? Where does it come from?
I'll be that for Shanda.
So it's a grant that comes from the government. Now, it used to be called municipal sustainability initiative, but they have now switched it to be called the local government fiscal framework grants. There's only certain categories and eligible projects that you can use these grants for. Something would be the sidewalk.
So is each municipality eligible for a set amount? Or do you have to make separate applications for this or other?
They give us a set amount every annual week.
Then I want to know how much that set amount is.
It was going to be, they dropped it this year, five hundred and forty thousand?
Yeah, it's on your spreadsheet there, five forty-nine.
Okay.
Okay, moving on then, are we finished with questions? Any questions on sidewalk? We were shown sidewalk so fix completed from other years. Go ahead.
Just on that grant as well, we've had allocations in twenty-four and twenty-five that we haven't used yet. We had to use up the M S I funding first before we could start applying within the L G F A. So there is a carry forward.
How much is the carry forward?
It is one point one. So they've been giving us about five hundred and eighty last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The one point one is at the top of your spreadsheet there, top left.
I'm just taking, I'm just taking the pictures right now. Councilor Temple, did you have a comment?
As soon as I heard one point one.
Oh. Moving on to the motor.
Okay, the wheel loader. I know council, when they did the first, saw the upside of the wheel loader, how rusty it was. I had happened to climb into the cabin there to drive in the seat and it's rusty, like it's terrible inside. So this is a definite. I think it's very important that this gets replaced along with the snow blower attachment.
Questions on the loader?
If you look at the bottom of that paper, that is also going to be funded through a grant.
Also have some more pictures up on the screen if you.
There's, yeah, if you want to see.
No, my memory is quite fresh of this thing.
Right inside that cabin.
Let's move ahead to the blower attachment right away.
Okay, again, I won't say it, but as soon as it breaks down, it's done, it's finished. If you look to the bottom of your page again, this is also going to be a grant that will pay for it. So the pictures speak for itself. There's a picture of a new, so if anybody wants to know what the new attachment would look like, that picture to the left, bottom left, that's what it will look like. It has its own self-contained mulp engine.
It's got its own engine?
Its own engine, it's self-contained and it all works by remote. So basically, the loader goes, it hooks up to it. And as soon as you hook up to it, you have your controls in your cab, wireless, that you can start the machine. And then from the start, you can turn it to engage the augers and you can got your controls to use your chute. So it's, it's going to be just another thing that will increase our snow clearing times.
Questions from council?
I do. Mike, when are these, both of these things available?
So if you guys give me the word that I can start, if it's in North America, these pieces, two to three months maybe. If it's not, four to six months. So as soon as you guys can give me the go-ahead on that, I'm going to put out R F P and we'll get started because if we want to get it for this winter or later on this winter, we have to start soon.
So what happens if our current one breaks down and we have to use contractors? If we can get them?
Yeah, or we rent. And the rent on a loader right now is about eight to ten thousand dollars a month. And to try to rent a snow blower, like there's an attachment, you ain't getting it. So I can tell you that it's fifteen thousand a month. That's what they told me if you can get it. Because first of all, the loader that you rent would have to be adapted to handle that snow blower, to be able to hook to it. So that stuff is, basically, we'll be using it in order to do snow clearing in the downtown and around town. We would never be able to do the highway again if we don't have a snow blower because the snow blower, we do a straight line, trucks on one side, snow blower, traffic goes around us. If we have to use a lower doing, loader doing the highway, you have to back up, you have to turn, you're going to be blocking traffic. So it's a definite piece of equipment that any municipality needs.
Questions? Councilor Burisky?
The loader you can get immediately, but the blower, where do you get the blower from?
So the blowers, there's two or three different companies in Alberta. There's Joe Johnson Equipment in Calgary and there is, what's the name of the other company? Oh, there's one in Atchison that sells the R P N tech. So there is three, there's two or three different options. Like we won't be just looking at one. They have to give us pricing on three different ones. And they are all quite capable of doing it.
The other.
No, just one quick question. You mentioned there about clearing the snow on the highways. Is that a responsibility? Is that not, the prairie's supposed to do that or are we doing that on their rehab?
They don't have the equipment to be able to, they would have to do what I just said. They have to use loaders and trucks. It does not work.
Yeah, so they reimbursing us for doing their work?
Yeah, so what we do is we do a cost share with them.
Okay.
So they pay fifty percent, we pay fifty percent. So because it is our business, it's our tax base along the highway that they're paying. So we do, we pay half, they pay half.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure there's some clarification that case. Some other people will wonder, people outside of this room here, once they see anything, who may ask also, same thing. So that's good, thanks for answering.
Any other questions or comments from council? Moving on then to.
While I've got Mike here, let's skip to the forty-fourth street, rehabilitation.
Yes.
Let's do that.
Go ahead.
So forty-fourth street is, we have our tenders in and Berken. Berken jump in here anytime he wants and help me out. The price that you see is a engineering price. When it goes out to tender, those prices could show higher, they could show lower. It's all according to how who bids and how many people bid and how busy it's going to be next year for construction season. And other than that, you guys seen the. And other than that, you guys seen the street, it is in, there's no fixing it, like it has to be total rehab. And I don't know if Vern wants to talk to the underground there, but he has looked at some of the underground stuff. We have saved, saved some money because of some of the plate we are, that's we can keep. Like Vern talking about if he wants to.
Your worship.
As high as it was sitting here before.
Your worship, we, this project was on the list for last year. But we wanted to do an investigation on some of the condition of the pipe underground before we went forward with doing any of the work. We found that the pipe down there in certain areas is in good shape, some of it's even PVC. So we eliminated some section of replacement of water line. The super lines is pretty good shape, there'll be some mad hole repairs, but that's the extent of the utility side of things.
Questions? I've got a question. We were shown three.
Yeah.
Where's the other two and why aren't they in this list?
Well, we, we figured we'd only bring enough that you guys will, will agree on doing. Fifty Pine Crescent and Evergreen Drive, fifty eighth app. We could have, we could have engineering done on those right away. You could, you were concerned about fifty that from forty to fifty. We can get engineered on that as soon as possible if you guys want, so.
I guess what I'd like management to do is not anticipate us. We do show us three projects on a tour like that, then we expect to see three projects here. Now, we, we know that we can't do all three maybe, but then, then we can decide whether we do one of three, two of three, or all three. I'd rather that you just give us and we don't look at it in terms of you guys making mistakes, okay? Give us the numbers, we know that the cuts will be made and we'll make them. But I'd like to see the other two projects before next Tuesday. Okay?
In regards to fifty-eight, around to fifty-fifth, that area, there won't be, in my anticipation, there's no utility work needed to be done there. Because that was all PVC in that area.
Questions or comments? Yeah.
I can see where Mike's coming from because I sat in that seat one day. And what happened is the engineering will cost us something to have these projects estimated. They're so comfortable there.
No, then, then we need to know the estimate of the cost of the engineering. And, and I, I realize that you're going to basically make some intelligent guesses around this. But my, my own feeling is that even if we don't do them this year, we've already got it in the right mindset to line this work up over. We've got four years in council, right? My sense is that this council wants to do things. Okay, and so we need to have the material to work with. Go ahead.
So the prices that I gave you for the other two are engineering prices. There is, there is diagrams drawn up and all that stuff, that's all done. So that is like preliminary engineering, that was paid for, we had, because we have some money in our road logic for engineering. So to present you guys with that, it's not hard to do because it is engineering crisis.
Well, I'm of the opinion that we need to know that. And we also need to know, can we in fact complete all three of them in how much time? I dare say we couldn't do all three in one year anyway, but we need to know. Shanda?
So I actually have put together a ten-year plan. It's a work in progress, which includes the Pine Crescent and the Evergreen in it with their numbers.
I'd like to see a ten-year plan, but I can tell you right now, I'm not interested in the last six. I'm only interested in this four.
It's only, wow, it's all in there, so this is a work in progress estimate.
No, I appreciate everybody needs a ten-year plan there with ten commandments, not we need ten years. I'm really interested in getting as much done by this council as possible.
Go ahead, Mike. So your worship, I talked to the engineer today, actually he was in my office, and what he suggested, because I did, I did talk to him about doing multiple roads in a year. What he suggested for us to do is do something like forty-fourth, where you have to do surface and underground. And then the next road would be just service, so that you could probably accomplish all that in a summer. But to do two streets where you do all, probably not going to happen.
That's valuable for us to know, thank you. Let's just move the ten-year plan to one side until we finish all these individual projects, okay? But thanks a lot. And, and I'm assuming that we'll, we'll have some more material to work with for next Tuesday. Moving on to the fire department.
I got one question, Mr. Mayor, I have one question for Mike.
Oh, go ahead.
Pine Crescent, does that require any underground work?
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer?
Storm sewer, storm sewer is in that place, one point two.
Is it? Okay, thank you.
All right, with the fire department. The east outside pad replacement and the inside wash bay, the ducts are hurt on the summit.
Just stop on the. Today's day and age, the trucks are obviously bigger, heavier, haul a lot more stuff. This pad has been there, I'm sure since the fire hall's been there. It's, it's sinking, every, every, every year it gets lower and lower. And it's a little, full cup for you to chucks it in and out of the hall.
You're talking about the entrance?
The entrance, yeah. Yeah, I've talked to, I've talked to a few contractors, one guy that specializes in asphalt and the other one in concrete. They, believe it or not, the asphalt guy actually suggested concrete for as a replacement, it's harder, it should all shift as one and not have these sinking holes. There is a main line that I believe comes underneath there, there is shut offs in the, in the pad. And again, the trucks are big and heavy and I hate for us to take one of those things out, so.
Questions? Councillor first, did you have a question?
I have, yes.
Any other questions on, on the outside path? Non-moving on then to the next fire hall, inside wash bay?
Oh, wash bay.
So the inside wash bay, I was actually part of the renovation or the expansion of the fire hall. And the old concrete in the hall is holding up way better than this one. Again, same guy that I talked to, the concrete guy, he said the relief cuts aren't in the proper spots. And pretty much where he said he should have had the concrete or the relief cuts, that's exactly where the concrete's cut or cracking. And it's probably every five, six feet, there's, there's a crack that goes from one edge to our drain. There, and with this, there's heat, there's in-floor heat lines. And I'm just, I'm really worried that it's only going to get worse. Cracks are slowly getting bigger, you can see the moisture holding in the cracks. And I'm scared to lose our in-floor heat lines. And then worst case scenario is we have to jackhammer and tear up the whole floor to replace it. So the replacement suggestion, the CPO's just got a new floor two years ago. And it's, it's a beautiful floor, it's, it holds water, it's, it hasn't scratched or cracked. I talked to the guy, the product that they're recommending, put, he put down is meant for washways. They will seal the cracks, they will do those relief cuts in the proper spots and bring it back to where it should have been. I don't know. And I'm hoping we could change the color from red to something better than red, so that's my preference. And this year we do the whole wash bay floor as well as in the host tower where it's still exposed concrete.
I've got a concrete tester, we have to test the concrete to see the strength, see what strength you have left in it. Okay, so I've got a tester, I can come down there and do that for you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from anyone, councilman?
This is probably for David or Shanda. The agreement we have with the county on the cost share on the fire department, does this get covered at all in that or the by topic tackle type stuff?
They, they can contribute. If at their discretion.
Yeah, they tend to find anything that's mutually beneficial. I find that a lot of times the building repairs or anything, they kind of shy away from that.
Okay, thanks for the, I'll try. Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's always worth a try, we do have to present this to them as well.
It'll be part of the overall fire hall budget, but if we put it in there that we'd like them to share, maybe they will come forward with some dollars, but we rehearsed that.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on then to the third fire department project.
This is the smallest one, it makes you feel better. So again, with the expansion, it was a poorly designed. The host tower, that's that tall part of the building that sticks through the roof. There's a roof butts right up against it and they, their solution to watershed was a ton of caulking, caulking's broke down. You can see in the, the top picture, there was a waterfall that was pouring down into the fire hall. That extended to the drop ceiling, which thank God is drop ceiling, the ceiling tiles, I don't know what the extension is in the walls, I haven't opened it up. Yeah, it's, it's not good. And then also on the roof, I believe, I believe they missed six inch gutters. And now they're, when I went up there to put the tin on that we covered in the operational budget to shed the water away. The gutter's missing and there's actually open holes in the roof into the attic space where the, where the gutter shows recovering it. So that's part of that package to get that all buttoned up to.
Questions from council? I have a technical accounting question for the CEO. Is this, is this capital or repair?
The, actually renewal of an existing asset can be capital. For this type of major repair.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the fire department for the fire chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go ahead, I wanted to catch up with the streets. Forty-fourth street, we have a budget of two point eight, two point nine million. What were the names of the other two projects? I think one was Pine Crescent, was it?
Yeah.
And that should be one.
You gave us a number on your tour, how much was that one?
One point two.
One point two? And what was the name of the other one? That would be Evergreen Drive. From forty-eighth to fifty-fifth. And what was the price there? Four million, four, four point zero. Okay, and this one was really two point nine. Thank you. This bridge together come to eight point one.
Right, and you know, we, the council decided to go along with Pine Crest in addition. Now, I mean, the debt servicing would be fairly low each, each year, so it's just something we could handle. The four million dollar project, that's a little tougher, I mean, we could, but you know, that depends on the council size. Anyway.
That's from the financial point of view, but there's also a sequencing issue here. Could Pine Crescent and forty-fourth be done in the same year since you have to do some groundwork like storm sewers? Can you do? I think, okay, you mentioned you want one project that's got underground work and the other one just surface work. Tell me which two fit best together of these three. Never mind the price, just from a construction point of view, forty-fourth and Pine Crescent. Thank you. All right, recreation, no, just trying to find out from the, are we satisfied on these paving, street renewal rebuilds? Because they were the big issues on the tour. No problems, no questions there, okay?
Heat evening.
Go ahead, the heating experiment.
So I had a contractor come up to, he does his yearly maintenance on it. And he advised this year, we need to look into replacing it. I'm sorry. If it breaks down, it's four to six months to bring in, and another week to replace it. He, and that's basic. If it does go down and we have a hard winter, other things will break down without heat in that facility. It also heats the golf simulator room upstairs, this heat exchanger does all of the G B C. Not only does it interrupt the ice surface, but it comes to minor hockey, rec teams, public use, schools. These are all facilities, they all use facilities. So without the heat exchanger, that happens to break down, we're in trouble. Because the one they installed is European, they have a very different piping system. So to replace it, we have to get the same system from Europe. I know, I'm sorry. If we were to replace it with one from North America, that would require pipes to be moved. We'd have to bring in construction crew engineers to replace it with something from North America. So our contractor said the best bet would just order one from Europe because they are available. So he said that would be the most cost effective. Current one is running, she's replacing pieces, but he said doesn't know how much longer this will last. But you don't have a replacement on hand and that is the issue right now.
Questions from council, questions or comments? There are none, we'll move on to.
Sorry, can I just add to that? I'm working with minor hockey to bring some events to High Prairie. These events are similar to three eight, which will bring thousands and thousands of people into this community. We also have to guarantee hotels, restaurants. These events are so big that we've had to, minor hockey's had to reserve hotels in Value View and McLennan. Unfortunately, I can't release the information because it's confidential until the contract's signed. But these events would bring High Prairie on the map for all of Alberta.
Well, you just put it on YouTube.
Oh. But we don't know what, there's multiple events I'm trying to bring forward.
Moving on to the Athletic Center. By the way, the worst way to keep the secret is to say you've got a secret.
It's exciting secrets.
I know, and now we're going to find out what it is.
Soon.
Trust me, it'll be all over town in forty-eight hours. Go ahead.
Like we discussed earlier today, these pumps are about twenty-seven to thirty years old. Although people are only twenty years old, when these pumps are purchased, they are already becoming outdated. New, with new technology, new science, the new, new pumps we bring in are energy efficient, less electricity, less water, easy to replace. um, easy to replace at a much better cost. Um, these pumps are becoming obsolete. Uh, one of, some of our features don't work. We can't find pumps to replace them. Um, or the cost is still outrageous that to bring it in would not be feasible because we could now replace hazard pumps for that price.
Questions from council? Counselor Hammond?
So with these pumps, how many pumps are there?
Um, I apologize, it's between seven and ten. We did have some replacements lined up in case of emergency. We've gone through them.
Okay, and for seventy-five thousand, that would replace all these current pumps?
He could only guarantee seventy-five thousand. He has to investigate further, but it's taking quite a long time. Um, it's no other mechanical, another issue we have being so far north, not many companies will come here to service your pool. So we're very limited on who we could hire to come, Nordic being one of them. Um, so we kind of have to work on his third time. Because I've contacted G P, they have internal. A lot of bigger cities have staff who take care of this. We just don't have that capability.
Question from council? Let me clarify something. You mentioned that the pumps are thirty years old, but the pool is twenty years old.
Yeah.
Are you telling me that the pumps physically were ten years old when they were installed? Or is it thirty-year-old technology installed in a twenty-year-old pool?
Um, technology. So when they built the pool, they had an option to spend a little more and get what's current or to save some money and get something that's a little more outdated. I was told at the time that they were running out of money and that was the way to save. So we, we got twenty thou, twenty years out of it, which is quite well. So I know you guys don't want to hear that, but obsolete is the issue. Um, and it's become even harder to find parts. So parts, he had taken some pumps, hoping that he could fix the inside with pieces and it's not working.
Questions or comments on Counselor Temple? Is the saltwater having any effect on these pumps?
No. It's, all the pools go with, um, sort of, you know, there's certain chemicals all pools use and they are hard. And that's why they've moved away from metal and have gone to plastic and other technologies because they're longer lasting and more feasible. So they're easier to replace.
Okay.
And our splash pad is of the new technology.
That then raises the question though, should we be staying with a saltwater pool or is it more advantageous to switch away from it?
Um, you would spend millions upon millions upon millions to convert it. It's a good system. It works. It's just these pumps back in early two thousand were the best of the technology and what's on the tip of the earth. But since then, science has gone better, technology. They figured out that metal isn't the way to go. It's not trying to, I say plastic, but it's not quite plastic. So just like you see with your cars that are updated, you see with energy efficiency, tech, time produces better products. And cheaper products, new products will be cheaper to replace should we need to.
Well, what's interesting, they figured out that metal doesn't get along. I mean, the galvanic scale's only been known for about a hundred and fifty years. Moving on to concrete outside the aquatic center.
So we have a still a patch in front of the pool, uh, it's a safety hazard. It's, um, it's at night when it's darker, you don't see it. It's easy to trip. I've seen people trip over it. Um, we have a quite young crowd and an older crowd that likes to come every day, especially in the winter months where it's quite dark. If it's snow covered, you don't see that. So people have tripped over it. Um, so I would like to replace that patch.
It should be noted, my wife walks over that three days a year.
Yeah.
So it occurs.
It's true. It's a liability, but Tom knows about it. So we have a level of service we need to provide and accessibility without tripping hazards is wonderful.
Questions on this project? Go ahead, Counselor Burrisky.
No comments. The reason concrete pops like that is because something's moving. So the base has to be done properly. And like I told you, it's got to be soaked away from the building. And the first set of rails where the rocks are would have to be removed so you could soak it away. Because what's happening is the water is getting underneath the concrete and it's moving it up. As soon as it moves, it pops like this. So you'd have to get rid of the movement of concrete. So when you get a price, oh, concrete guy will have to give you a price.
That raises the question though, sorry, that raises the question, Counselor Burrisky. Is the budget adequate for a, a real fix?
A real thick?
Fix.
Oh, fix. Well, I'm fourteen thousand, gonna fix it. Pretty close. If, if we can get somebody like the town to come in and then jackhammer it out with, with their jackhammer, their equipment, otherwise we have to hire it up. If the town could do it, um, that would be a big cost savings. And, and then we have to do, like, there was, tell him, say, and that we have, you put down tile rock, styrofoam, and then the concrete so that any moisture that is close to evaporates. And if there is anything with the styrofoam will absorb it.
Thank you. Any other questions on this particular project then? Moving on to security cameras.
So to maintain the safety of the facility, the users and the staff, the current system is, as you tell from the pictures, it's blurry, very hard to see, some of them don't work anymore. I did have A P A C security in while they were doing the arenas to have a look at ours to see if we could just, if they change up some cameras at a very cost effective way. And he said, no, they're so outdated. It works on a different system. I don't know much about I T, but Brady, I had Brady come in because he does know I T. And it's an outdated system and to convert it to what we needed to do so that I have access away from the office. So if I just have a look, I can see, um, this system has to be replaced. Uh, we now have splash pad, which is a great recreational facility that we cannot see from inside. So a camera allows us to have eyes on it without being physically on it. So I do have staff that do their walkabouts one every hour to pick up garbage, trash, make sure everything's going well. But while they're not there, I'd like to be able to have eyes on it so I could see what's happening. If there's trouble, damage, if there's individuals who shouldn't be on it or who shouldn't be, I at least have the eyes to take care of it.
Thank you. Any other questions on, on security cameras? Moving on to carpets.
So as landlords, we have jitsu and gymnastics as backup. Um, and these bring in individuals from around the area. And as landlords, we have a standard of care we need to provide. Um, so when they walk upstairs and see this every day, it does give off a smell. We've tried cleaning it. We've did, did everything we could. It's not, we can't save it. We'd like to replace it.
Questions or comments on carpets? Counselor Minderline?
Just quick, like your carpeting, uh, would that be the best forest, uh, solution or would it be something like a vinyl flooring, something that's suitable and has much more better wear off? Uh, you can get the non-snoop type thing. Carpet is just going to keep, especially if people coming to removes this time of year and everything else. It's just going to keep getting like that. You're going to get the pressure there. And it's probably easier to maintain if it's, uh, some vinyl flooring product of some sort.
I was going to talk to Shanda about if they did get the carpet, that we could peek back off it as it's getting a discount because you buy more bulk. Um, I would look into both, what cost it for months.
I'm not looking at the cost, I'm looking for durability and I'm wearing it yesterday.
It would be a tile carpet so that we could replace it. Um, we do have a homeless issue. So when it gets quite cold out, they like to venture into this area. So, um, with the limited.
Counselor Minderline though, is more talking about the downstream cost of maintaining it as opposed to carpet file.
Um, I, I'd look into both. Like I've, I've gotten some estimates that they're very general. I need to go and dive deeper and check.
Sounds like you've got one week to do that. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And the roof.
So this has been, known been an issue for many, many years. At each year, we put money towards having someone come up and patch it. So it's now time to take care of it properly. Um, it's thoroughly worn out and cracked and that's what's causing the water damage into the dressing room number one and into other areas in that area of Sports Palace. Um, had someone come out four seasons at Sherwood Park, uh, to replace it would be about, he said fifty to eighteen thousand. And that's if we do it immediately this spring. If not, if we wait longer, it'd become a seventy-five thousand dollar, um, replacement. Said it's falling apart and that leak is only causing further damage and it's drying out because it's missing some of the roof liner. Um, so repairing this crack, replacing the lining would salvage the building for at least another seven to ten years.
Questions or comments? This project is eighteen thousand if you do it in the spring. But you said, but later it would cost what, seventy-five?
So he said, if you were to put it off another year, most likely you would have to redo the entire area of the roof. So it's flat top that you see that um, is to the south side. So you get the slope and you got the flat top. So the issue is it started cracking and it's been cracking continually for years. And every year someone has come in, did some patchwork, but not repaired the actual issue, which is the liner needs to be replaced. Um, he said seventy-five thousand because the longer we wait, the worse for where it's getting. And that leak is just going to get bigger.
Do we have any indication of why the liner cracked in the first place?
Um, when it was, he believes, again, this is him just looking at it, believes that it was just a poor design, poor installation. Um, it needed more work done to it and it just wasn't done. And poor upkeep. So you'll hear that coming from us. Um, limited budgets, you got limited money to go around to repair stuff or replace stuff. And this is just one of the issues that has entered our town.
Any questions? Any final questions or Counselor Hammond?
I just have a comment. In, in the, um, printout here, it says that it would cost about eighteen thousand, but on our budget, it says twenty thousand. So I just saved you two thousand dollars.
Somebody's got a sharper pencil than the, you know, the surgeon business appears. concession. Orange bottle has been sent.
So as the landlord, we have a duty to provide a safe and adequate equipment. He pays eighteen hundred a month. Um, and that tells him he will have equipment that he can use. The coolers, we've had repairmen come in, um, they do very temporary fix. Um, but these come to the conclusion that stop spending money on it and just replace it in the end, rather than spending a thousand dollars a month. Um, trying to fix something that shouldn't be fixed. You know, replace it now because if it breaks down and the product inside of it goes out, we're going to have an issue with the tenant. There's going to be a liability issue.
Questions or comments from counselors? Well, thank you very much and thank you for the tour that you've just been doing for us today.
Questions about, so the arena and the pool, if you guys had any words to go on?
If I, if I can find the words. Um, I, I think what council needs to be thinking about or looking at is, is the five-year, ten-year outlook. Um, if the goal is to, uh, just as an example, is to tear down the sports palace and build a multiplex or relight the sports palace or whatever, whatever the, the long-term goal is, then the solution right now isn't to, uh, spend a bunch of money on a bunch of little projects. It's to, uh, hubble things together and, uh, and get by until that that large project comes to fruition. And if the, you know, if council's goal is to instead maintain the sport palace, then and, uh, maintain the sports palace and keep things going the way they are, it just feels like what's being proposed is, is, uh, a little bit less than, uh, what the sports palace really, really needs to see, really needs. Do you get what I'm saying?
I, yes, very much. Again, I think what we've got is manager being hesitant and coming forth with the full.
Yeah.
Like because they've been conditioned not to.
Yeah.
No, I think you made a, a very good point.
I have brought that issue up out of J R C that you go to the joint recreation committee.
Yeah.
First, before it comes to council. Um, I have brought up that it's a building that's seventy years old. You can only do much, so much before the next thing breaks down. Um, you're going to constantly be finding issues. So rather than continue trying to fix everything that is broken, let's start looking into our multiplex. And they were on board for that. Um, I did do some initial investigating into it. Spoke to companies from who had worked on the Valley Views, Slade Lake, they're currently working in Ground Prairie, Gen Cold, uh, builders. He is familiar with this sports house. Um, I had told him the two ice surfaces, one being brand new in the sports center or sports palace. The one in the G B C only being twenty years old, that is about four million dollars in savings. So I had mentioned to him that if I was to fix the shell, I would leave the ice surfaces exactly where they are. Why throw away four million when they're perfectly good? I would find a way to work around that to save money. Um, I talked with him, um, the G B C is in great shape, like for being twenty years old, it's still considered new, just needs some minor changes. Where the money would be spent, it's mostly in the sports palace, wobbly. Um, having a multiplex, no matter how small the town, it's become normal. You can go Valley View, you can go Fairview, Beaver Lodge, Slade Lake, Grimshaw, um, Smokey, Flare, they all have indoor facilities, field houses. It's become normal and they find ways to, to find it. Because that's now an expectation when they're trying to attract new, um, people to the community, professionals, doctors, teachers, local West Fraser, they come here for recreation and the ability to go and do stuff with their families. And that's why most of these communities have already moved forward with those multiplexes because they know they need to draw people in, which means more tax money coming into our market, more buildings, more economic. You know, so the recreation does work with every department and seeing positive changes.
Counselor Burrisky?
Okay, so you're talking about covering the, the existing building or taking the curling rink and the skate rink down the shell and then redoing it?
Yes. So they said some of the bodies, well, so how they would start it is renovate the G B C, finish that off, move to the sports palace because we can't just get rid of hockey and, and then from there work into the middle to build it together. They did one in Ladue and that's exactly how they did it. They built a second ice surface and then what they did is half one year, half the other, and then finished the middle kind of within a few years, or three years. Um, multiplexes are now normal. So when we're trying to attract doctors and I go on these tours with these doctors to show them High Prairie, almost every single one of them asks, where's your, like, can you play basketball? Can you play tennis? Pickleball in the winter? And I don't have an answer for them. And that's an expectation. Now, it's when they're working that their families have somewhere to go to keep themselves busy.
Any questions, other questions? I want to follow up on Counselor Burrisky and make it very clear in my mind and everybody. You are suggesting basically building a brand new envelope over the current, current rink, the current. The current current rink, the current sports palace, taking out the current envelopes, a brand new. Frame over top of everything, enclosing the empty space between the current buildings. And utilizing that for other activities. You mentioned basketball, etc.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's called retrofitting an arena.
Yeah.
And that's what Slade Lake did.
How much money?
Um, when I talked to Jen Cole, they said between ten and fifty. Big savings was um both arenas being. The ice surfaces, four million right there. He said ten, but he said to be safe, I'm gonna save fifty. But he thinks for ten million, because we already have two ice surfaces, G B C is only twenty years old, major work would happen. Connecting them in the lobby, field house and the sports house. But again. The pool is where, so Valley View spent fifty million and they don't have an ice surface. However. Half that budget went to the pool. And so that's where we would not worry because we would bring the pool over. So. I think it's something that's been neglected for many, many years.
Before you go on, so the current footprint would not significantly alter. If I if I were just to run string line right around. It would, that footprint wouldn't get any bigger significantly.
Yes, it would. It'd be almost in an L shape. So behind the museum. Would be. Um, in that parking lot area would be in addition a field house. It'd almost be a boomerang style. You know what a boomerang looks like? So, because I wouldn't move the ice surfaces, that would be too costly. We'd lose five million right there. So if you had in a boomerang style where. The lobby is brought out, we would lose parking, but that's just. We can't go up, we can go out. Um, but I think it's something the town needs to seriously look into if we want to compete for taxpayers, for professionals. For economic development. I recreation is.
And I would pose something to you because we would lose so much parking that the Golden Age Club would be gone. And we would have to probably, but we could probably easily integrate it into a new building.
Um. Parking would be lost from the arena facility parking lot, not from. And I am looking into grants to see if we can connect.
No, you're going out to the. Um, to the south.
Southeast, southwest, um. I'm trying to figure out where I am. Um, do you guys remember there used to be a? Garden area, anyone? I was told, um, directly behind the museum, it's parking there.
That's the Golden Age Club.
Isn't that the building beside it?
The Golden Age Club.
Behind.
Right here. There's the Golden Age Club.
If you looked at the the museum sitting on main, on the on the highway.
Yeah.
There's a driveway, then there's. The Golden Age Club, the old information booth was there.
Yeah.
If you're. Either way, you're gonna lose a lot of parking. But anyway. This is an interesting concept that I think council would like to hear more about in the new year. Okay? Moving on to law enforcement.
I think it's true.
Oh, I.
Counselor Sumner?
That that's what I was getting at earlier. So if council's goal is to. Re-put a new shell up over top of the sports palace, suddenly a lot of the things suggested in this year's capital budget. Make a lot less sense. We don't spend money on this capital budget. We save that money for later. And the.
Sounds like you just lost a vote. No, I agree with, no, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I thought that at first.
Yeah.
And that was my mindset until I realized we still need to bring in revenue. We still have to uphold a level of care to our our citizens. Users, we sell memberships, we sell punch passes, there's. The double down effect. So if we completely cut out any renovations. Well, if we lose an ice surface, we're now losing hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue. We still have to provide a level of service that matches what the town of High Prairie is. So to walk into a facility that's had zero repair in the five, six years until we build something. Well, there's a liability to it, but.
No, and I agree with you. I'm just saying there's some things that are needed and some things that. Maybe we put a Band-Aid on because it doesn't make sense to spend twenty thousand dollars on something just to rip it out in a few years.
I think we're all anticipating a more comprehensive. Though futuristic kind of presentation in January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Law enforcement.
My turn, my turn.
Last but not least.
Uh, yeah, right. Uh, so in-car camera and body camera upgrade system. Uh, so our current body camera system that we do have is cloud-based uh. Software slash system. And throughout the year this year, we have had nothing but uh increasing issues with it. Um, there's been multiple instances where I have had to attend court for uh traffic offenses that I have issued a ticket for. Um, resulting in the the cases in court being dismissed due to us not being able to provide video footage. Um, there's been multiple, multiple instances where I have tried to either review camera footage. Or have it attached to a a file or uh whatever that may be. Um, and we've been unable to, due to uh the recording not uploading properly, uh it being. Corrupted somehow in the the cloud uploading process, um, or it just not recording at all. Um, there would also be multiple instances where I would just be sitting in the office and it would randomly start recording. Um. It would be going for many hours throughout the day, recording uh basically nonsense, uh. Using up all of our our storage uh upon the server, resulting in not being able to capture the important. Um. Things that we need to to capture. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to kind of just add with this as well is um. The town of High Prairie has an authorized uh employer of community peace officers for the province of Alberta is required to. Um. Maintain and um. Be within certain guidelines that the the province has set forth. If we're not meeting those guidelines, um, then basically the town. Could lose its ability to be an employer of authorized, or sorry, an authorized employer of community peace officers. Further resulting in basically no municipal enforcement being here within the town of High Prairie. Um. Something pretty small, but it's it's a requirement that we we have to have body cameras as peace officers and um. Yeah, I just figured that out.
Questions from council? Counselor Sumner?
What what portion of the fifty thousand is a fixed cost versus a variable cost? I assume we're spending. Ten thousand dollars on a server and then a thousand bucks per camera.
So as far as I'm aware, this this fifty thousand dollar budget uh that we have. Here, uh it would be for all of the hardware and then the yearly costs after that would only be about thirty six hundred dollars for licensing fees and. Access to certain components of the server that we we do need, that we can't have on site.
More so what I'm getting at, is there any opportunity to share hardware with a neighbor municipality if we're sharing Valley View server as an example?
As as far as I'm aware, there is not something in place uh for that, but the vendor that we were looking at for body cameras. Uh, they're a very well-known uh vendor. If anybody watches YouTube uh here in the. Twenty twenty-five nowadays, you'll see many uh police body camera footage videos posted on YouTube. A lot of the times there'll be like a little title up in the top corner that says Axon Body Three, Axon Body Four. Uh, so we're moving or we're we're hoping to move to the Axon body camera vendor, which is. Uh, also the same vendor that the Royal Canadian Mounted Police had just awarded the contract to. Um, so they are currently implementing and rolling out the the Axon body cameras, so I could look into it and see if it's an. An option where we could cost share with R C M P or somehow um limit. The total cost for the town.
Just instead of us paying for hard drives and the R C M P detachment, paying for hard drives, just sharing their hard drive, right?
Correct, yes. I'll I'll look into that. I don't have that answer right now.
Further questions on uh? Body cams? Moving then to security cameras.
Uh, so town office security cameras. So um our current system, it's extremely outdated, uh unreliable. Um, as you could tell from the photo, there's actually three cameras that are missing in that picture. They are melted, they are powered and they should be working. Uh, but they're not displaying on the screen. Um, just old system, old hardware, uh. Things aren't communicating like they should be. Uh, so we're hoping to upgrade this system to uh basically. Assist us. With anything that might happen in the future, uh vandalisms, break-ins, um. Issues possibly with. I I don't think that that would ever be an issue here, but um if it ever becomes an issue down the road, uh employees stealing things from. Buildings. Um, I haven't been here long enough, nor have I ever heard of something like that happening, but it's uh just a point that I would like to add and assist. Um. Another thing with that too is uh. We're spending a lot more money to replace these older systems more frequently when we could have one system. Uh, that's kind of new and updated and have it in place that might last for seven to ten years. I really have any more additions from that. Any questions?
Any questions on security cameras? Counselor. Thank you then. See, I always have some comments to just tie all of this together and then we'll take a ten, fifteen minute walk.
Right, uh and one of the slides, the the second last slide is uh. The company's contribution towards our capital program. We we have a very cooperative. Collaborative relationship with them and I will put it in front of them to to request their contribution to the two thousand twenty-six. Capital program. But overall, I mean, we do have some ability to take on an extra road project if we're required. Um, but I'll leave it to council and we can adjust our budget accordingly and still have uh. I still recommend that we have a modest or moderate tax rate increase, tax revenue increase.
Any any sort of summary kind of question or comment? Okay, let's take a recess, Joe Tino Qua.